I call this meeting to order. Please silence your cell phones and stand for the invocation given by Councilmember Mike Posner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting in this new year. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace, Lord God, as we make decisions that affect the citizens of Batavia. And continue to remind us that all that we do here today, all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you, and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every and justness for all.
All speakers should have signed up in advance with the city clerk. Each speaker will please use the podium. Please state your name and address before beginning your statement. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes. Please address your comments to the chair. Council will not engage in debate with the speaker. On your first bell, that means we have 30 seconds left. On the second bell, your time will end and we'll have to stop.
John Roach.
John Roach from 16th Avenue Terrace. Just a couple of questions. I see the proposed budget has some more roof repair here at the city center over the theater, Theater 54. I'm kind of curious, since we're going to be spending more money on that piece of property, what's the plan to sell it? We may lease it out another five years or something, but at the end, do you have a plan to finally sell this? Or is the plan to be a landlord for another five, 10, 15, 20 years? The other is appropriated money to hire a professional or an expert on code review? I was just wondering how that comes in. Is Starred already? Have they made any progress or anything else? Sort of just a general question. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone like to respond? Rachel?
Yes. The roof repairs at Theater 56 was slated in last year's budget. It's coming out of facility reserves. The project was not completed in last year's budget cycle, so we're keeping it in capital projects for this year. As far as a plan to sell it, I think, I hope, I speak for all of council, that we don't want to own this real estate. At one point, we did own real estate in city center with the hopes of moving that real estate into the private sector as a whole. And at some point, I think we're going to want to negotiate with the theater about purchasing us out at some time when they're possibly able to do that, or alleviating the city from owning the property. But I'll let each council member speak for themselves if they have a different opinion. The second thing, appropriated money to review codes. So we are under a codes rewrite, code and zoning rewrite. We have a committee that's been meeting. Libella was a successful firm that got the work for that, and we continue to work through, trying to update the codes as it's the second step after you do finish a comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan was finished in 2017. Managers changed, COVID happened, and now we're back to it. So I think the entire process will take at least a year and a year and a half till we see anything for public draft.
Anyone else?
I for one would like to see the theater sold or us buy them out. Perhaps we can even look into rent a home, have them make active payments down the road. Since we are in negotiations with them, I'm sure they'll go with it.
Anyone else? Communications?
Ever Present Church submitted an application for a luncheon chili contest on Sunday, February 9th. This will be in the city center concourse, starting at 10:00 a.m.
Any questions or concerns on that? Continue, please.
The Batavia Business Improvement District submitted their application for their annual beer walk on Saturday, February 22nd throughout downtown. This will be from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. They've also requested the open container for that, which is one of the items for discussion later.
Okay. Any questions or concerns on that? Continue.
Vanessa and Lola's Legacy submitted an application for a basket raffle and vendor event. This would be in the city center concourse on March 15th from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Any questions or concerns on that?
Do they have to have insurance?
Everybody has to have insurance. There's been a request to hold a celebration of life picnic on Saturday, May 24th from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. in Lyons Park.
Questions or concerns on that? Okay, continue.
And the Batavia Concert Band submitted their request to hold the summer concert series on Wednesdays from 7, yep, starting at 7:00 p.m. in Centennial Park from July 2nd through August 13th. Again, those are just Wednesdays.
Any questions or concerns on that? I have to say, I appreciate when people get these in early because it gives us plenty of time to get through the system because we have to get feedback from every department head and see how it affects them. So when, you know, if people are considering this or thinking about it, please get this in as early as possible. It makes it a lot easier for us and you, we're able to accommodate it a little easier. Okay, so just something I've noticed, sometimes people are waiting until the last minute and it, you know, their urgency is not necessarily helpful to us to get it on the schedule. So it's probably better to start early enough. Like these people are already planning for July, that's kind of the way to go. That's the last one or is there any other?
Yes, Ross out.
The next city council meeting will be held Monday, February 10th at 5:00 p.m. City Hall Council Boardroom, second floor, city center, because I believe there is a budget work session right after that meeting. So you'll see that listed in a minute when I read the budget session. So just as a reminder, next meeting is just like this one, it's going to be a 5 o'clock meeting. Budget work sessions, Monday, January 27th, after the council meeting, that's another, I believe, 5 o'clock meeting.
Today, yep.
Yeah, it's listed as, because budget meeting is following tonight.
Correct.
And then Tuesday, February 4th, 5:00 p.m. is just a budget meeting. Thursday, February 6th, 6:00 p.m. is a budget meeting. Police and DPW will be discussed. And then Monday, February 10th, that's the 5 o'clock meeting that will have a budget meeting right after it. And then Thursday, February 13th, if we need it, it'll be a 6 o'clock meeting. Today, we have a presentation from Smart Growth Plan from Felipe from the county. Do we need this thing down still?
I think we do.
We do.
Sorry, Council President.
Story of my life.
Well, I just want to welcome Felipe here tonight. He sent out a message to all municipalities across Genesee County with the opportunity to present the county's updated, latest, and greatest Smart Growth Plan. And we took him up on the offer and brought him in to speak to us tonight. So once we're all set up, we'll hand it over to you, Felipe. You can do podium, you can walk around the room, you can, you can, wherever you want to be.
You can have close participation.
Let me get the left.
Thanks, everyone, for having me here. Felipe Otramari, the plan representative of Genesee County. So the Smart Growth Plan, it's been around for 25 years now this year. So it's nothing new, but every year, we have people that come on boards and have never heard of it. So it's always good to refresh everyone. So that's why I extended my offer. It is reviewed every three years. So this is our tri-annual review for 25. Just some background, the Smart Growth Plan was adopted by the county legislature in 2001, and I'm sure you guys are familiar with SEAKER. When Genesee County had, did the county water project, they had to do a SEAKER review. And one of the impacts that were noted was that you were going to have to run water lines between, you know, McRoy and City Batavia, through all this farmland, for example. And that was going to have impacts on agriculture. Usually, development follows pipes, right? So when you start putting transmission lines between all these agricultural areas, you're going to end up with growth. And it was the state's concern that in state ag markets in particular, that we would cause this, you know, development on agricultural land. So Genesee County hired a consultant that came up with a solution that would ensure that any new development did not impact agriculture. So the Smart Growth Plan is policy for all the towns in Genesee County and the city, so that it gets everybody, all the municipalities, because they're part of the water agreement. So it's one of the clauses under the, between the county and the municipalities, those water agreements say that that municipality will abide by smart growth. So that we, in turn, Genesee County is abiding by the SEAKER for the water project. So there are some broad objectives for the plan. Basically, focus and encourage economic growth in areas with available public services, revitalize city, village, hamlet districts, and neighborhoods, and like we talked about, protect farmland and reduce impacts on agricultural activity. The scope of the Smart Growth Plan, basically what it does is it creates these areas of development, an area of development map. And within, you know, where there, so identifies those areas. It also shows just some zoning techniques, since the county does not have zoning, it's all done at the municipal level. It shows some potential techniques for that local communities can use to also, you know, help promote the growth within these development areas and, you know, discourage development outside of those. It also encourages growth in the most appropriate areas through hookups to the county water system. So there is a review of where water hookups happen. And then it also directs all county resources to these development areas. So in theory, our economic development folks, everybody that works for the county tries to put most of their investment within these development areas. All right, so the development areas, these are, we talked about this already, but basically, this is where the county finds that there is lands available for growth, where or where future infrastructure can be affordably provided, right? And it tries to avoid agricultural areas. And in the way we measure that is through what lands are enrolled into the agricultural district program, which is a state program administered by the county. And we also try to avoid sensitive areas such as wetlands, wildlife habitats, flood hazard areas where possible. And within the development areas, all new and existing development are automatically entitled to hookups, to water hookups, to the county water system. They are, although they are subject to lateral restriction policies by ag districts. So those, the ag district program that I mentioned, one of the things that it talks about is programs or lands that are enrolled in that, in those agricultural districts can be prevented from hooking up to public water through these town lateral restriction policies. I don't want to get too much into that. There's a lot of things that don't really apply to the city, but just kind of wanted to mention. Outside of the development areas, you're automatically entitled to a water hookup if it's an agricultural use, so any, or if it's an existing use. So all those uses basically are automatically entitled to a water hookup. And also, any structures which were issued a building permit prior to the date of the Smart Growth Plan. And then anything else, so any other water hookups, you know, outside of these development areas, have to go through an approval process at the county, the administrative review committee that reviews each water hookup on a case-by-case basis. So this is, this is the Smart Growth Development Area Map. All the blue that you see in there are the development areas where people are automatically allowed to hook up to a new public water line if you build something new, right? So you can see the entire city of Batavia is within a development area, so you guys don't really have to worry about that at all. The county administers water hookups outside of those blue zones, except for the town of Batavia. The town of Batavia administers their own smart growth, and that was just a deal that was done from the very beginning. They had way more development at the time, and so they, that was part of the water agreement back in the day. All right, we do have an administrative committee that reviews those water hookups. We have two members from our mining department are on it. There's a member, so the water conservation district, the district manager there, executive director of front of property extension, and there's farmers that are represented as the agricultural protection board, and just the general farmer that's also on.
Felipe, is that committee wholly separate from the new water committee being formed that will review?
Yes.
Deals per day type issue? Okay, so it's completely separate?
That committee's been around since the beginning of the plan since 2001. So over 24 years now, we haven't had a water hookup review this year yet. We've had only 109, so over 25 years, or 24 years is not that many. Although, in the recent, recent last few years, we've had pretty much like a quarter of those water hookups happen. That's because we've seen a lot of water line expansion, especially in the northern towns, so Byron, Virgin, Elba, Old Field, Alba, pretty much all have water now, whereas that wasn't the case in 2001. So you can see the green dots there, those have all been approved. The red dots are the ones that have been denied. There's some yellow ones in there that are conditional approvals. You can see the breakdown here, 109 applications, 89 have been approved, so that's a 92% approval. So for the most part, people are getting approved. The ones that get disapproved tend to be those that are building right on farmland, prime soils, long crop history, productive land. So those are, those are the ones that we kind of found upon, and they have been denied. It comes to a lot of, you know, it comes to, it's news for a lot of people that people feel that, you know, they own land, there's a water line from their house, they should be able to build a house and hook up to that public water line, but that's not the case in Genesee County.
Why would you deny water? It said there were eight denied. I don't want a specific example, but what would be the reason?
Well, like I mentioned, if it's, our responsibility is to make sure that that water line didn't bring that development. And so, the only way to do that, and so that development didn't harm agriculture, so we have, the ones that have been denied have been the ones that, like I mentioned, have been, they're building a house in the, you know, in the middle of an agricultural field that has a long, you know, crop history with, you know, prime farmland, sodas, and those kinds of things.
And the other hand, this is all agriculture is allowed to hook up, but are there limitations on what the water can be used for?
Usually, those, those requests are for residential. I think we had one agricultural commercial proof of, most of those people just building a single-family home. As I mentioned earlier, that new agricultural uses can hook up, so if someone were to put up a greenhouse or a barn that was used for agricultural purposes, and they were willing to spend the money to put in backflow preventer and all those things that a commercial water hookup would require, then they're allowed to hook in a new, a new water hookup. So we've had, we've had people use that loophole. I really can't deny that. And so they built, you know, a greenhouse or something like that, and, you know, a few months later, there's a house next to it. If they built in between, you know, but that's, that's all we can do for that, you know, if there is a kind of like a built-in loophole there. As part of the Genesee 2050 Comprehensive Plan, the county underwent in 2021, we did a land use growth scenario. This was done by the Genesee Transportation Council. And they, they looked at two scenarios, like what would growth look like in Genesee County in 2050 with the proposed development pressure that the stamp site would produce? So where would that investment happen? So this was one of the, you know, some, some study that was done just to see what the value was of the Smart Growth Plan. And this is the scenario that they, you know, with the software that they were using, was able to kind of project where the investment would take place, where the land uses would change. And you can see that what's in the orange there is the projected land use change in Genesee County with the Smart Growth. And then without the Smart Growth, they saw that that development kind of spread out outside of the development areas, which are those, you know, circled red areas in the map. And you see all that orange sort of spread around, and you can see how, especially the corridor between the city of Batavia and the stamp site, which is, if you're not familiar, that's, you can look right there. You can see all those extra properties that are developed, that could be developed or would be developed by 2050. So you can see that it spreads out the development, out into the rural areas and causes basically suburban, you know, suburban sprawl. And this is, actually, I saw that your budget has a similar kind of map that shows the fiscal impact. With Smart Growth, a lot of the investment would happen within the city, the villages and the hamlets of the Genesee County. And outside of that, without the Smart Growth Plan, would create, you know, that same investment would happen, but would be spread out, out in the towns and toward agricultural areas. So that's, that's all I have. I just want to show you though, what the tri-annual review, the next step, so like I mentioned, this is, every three years, we go through this review. We're publicizing now the review. We are gathering input from the communities, so the towns, they can propose changes to those boundaries, those development area boundaries. They can, you guys here at the city, you could propose, since the boundaries don't really are affected by the city, but you could propose tax amendments to the plan, so we can read through it and if you see. And in the past, the previous city manager, why is it Jason Lino, he, he proposed us adding the PUD as a, as a zoning technique that we could add to the, to the, to the plan, so that's in there. A draft report will be presented in the summer in a series of public meetings. And then the plan is for the legislature to adopt the report in the fall. That's all I have. Questions?
Well, any of the properties that are in the zones, mark down the map. Let's say there's a house there, and they have a well. Are they going to be required to hook up to the water?
So that, that is not part of the Smart Growth Plan, that's part of water district formation. So when a town forms a water district, they usually have to get a certain number, a percentage of the landowners in that area to, to approve the water district, in order for the water district to be formed. And then people are, they're charged a district assessment for each unit that hooks up. In some cases, yeah, people are, I mean, they're not forced to hook in, but they're forced to pay. So for the most part, people are, are going to hook in when that's the case. That's done at the town of, when the water district formation takes place.
And Felipe, you do have committees starting up now for Smart Growth and Planning? Is that correct? Do you run a series? Is that?
We just had, we just meet with the different municipalities as we do. I know the town of Virgin is working to amend their zoning, or their, not their zoning, their, their boundaries. So you can see that some of the towns, see how they're much more sharp, like edges to them?
Yeah.
That's because they took the original ones, which are these like morphous blobs.
Yeah.
And they snapped them to parcel boundary, so that they would be, you know, you'd be able to tell which parcel was in and out.
So the planning committees you run for like education, government, separate from this?
You're talking about the focus groups?
Focus groups.
Yes, yes, those are comprehensive.
It doesn't parlay into this?
It's county policy, so it feeds into it, but it's not, it's not the same thing. It's a different, right, different committee. The different towns have been kind of amending these zones. One of the biggest changes have been in the town of Byron, they used to have a development area up in North Byron, otherwise known as Pumpkin Hill, and they decided they didn't want that there anymore, and they, they made a new area in Lyman Road.
South Byron area?
No, South Byron is here, this is this here, which is Lyman Coward Road, I think. And then also Pavilion created a new development area on Taxicula Town.
Anyone else?
No, thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Batavia Business Improvement District Beer Walk, Open Container. So that's a resolution that will be on the next business meeting if the council decides. So is there any questions or concerns on that? Rachel, did you want to cover anything or did you leave into it or?
No. I'm happy to just announce that the bid is looking to do an open container for their beer walk on Saturday, February 22nd. Everything was submitted in time to be able to move through conference and business agenda, be from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m., and they're asking for open container between those hours with approval from the city council.
Any questions that you can share on that? It's kind of the, the habit we've been taking since we had that discussion back in the beginning, so. So then, are we in consensus to move that to the next business meeting? Okay, that gets moved. Fiscal year 2526 tax cap.
Yes, thank you, Council President. So just want to talk a little bit about the state of the economy and the state of the budget. So everyone knows there's surging inflation. It was very difficult for communities across New York State to consistently comply with the tax cap. I believe the city has been extremely fiscally responsible in restraining tax hikes for our citizens, but keeping up with the inflationary demands of our expenses continues to remain challenging. This year, we face a million dollars of additional expenses for healthcare and retirement alone, as well as a nearly flat sales tax projection. So we need to rely on more revenue from other sources, including in this case, the property tax. Obviously, the city needs to be careful and conservative in projecting our revenue, especially the sales tax, and find a balanced approach to raise enough money to support current services with our property tax, while also using reserves, unassigned fund balance, and other revenue sources to keep a healthy financial position. Recently, the state comptroller's office was
So just want to talk a little bit about the state of the economy and the state of the budget. So everyone knows there's surging inflation. It was very difficult for communities across New York State to consistently comply with the tax cap. I believe the city has been extremely fiscally responsible in restraining tax hikes for our citizens, but keeping up with the inflationary demands of our expenses continues to remain challenging. This year, we face a million dollars of additional expenses for healthcare and retirement alone, as well as a nearly flat sales tax projection. So we need to rely on more revenue from other sources, including in this case, the property tax. Obviously, the city needs to be careful and conservative in projecting our revenue, especially the sales tax, and find a balanced approach to raise enough money to support current services with our property tax while also using reserves, unassigned fund balance, and other revenue sources to keep a healthy financial position. Recently, the state comptroller's office was very vocal in advising municipalities to stay flat on your sales tax numbers because we didn't know what the economy was going to do with a new administration. And it's only a few days in and we're still finding out how quickly the economy will change and move. Before I recommended this override of the 2% cap, I went back and I read the Citizens Guide to New York State Property Tax Cap from 2012 when it was put into place. The property tax cap is not absolute and can be overridden by a vote of 60% of the local governing body. Because the tax cap seldom actually equals 2%, it's extremely hard for governments to utilize this formula, remain under 2%, while expenses for employees, wages, healthcare, and retirement continue to grow. The only way that the tax cap is fair is if the tax cap actually equals the inflation rate. So therefore, it can keep up with the additional spending just to provide the same core services we do today. Right now, inflation is 3%, 3.5%. As you see, our general fund budget as proposed at this time increases 2.6%, which is $600,000 over last year. Even with the override consideration, property tax owners will see a 50 cent decrease per thousand in their taxes this year. At this time, I recommend the city council move forward to schedule the tax cap override legislation to be considered at the February business meeting. And the legislation does call for a public hearing.
Questions or concerns? So are we in consensus to move that to the business meeting? And basically, we're just scheduling a public hearing at the business meeting at this point.
Correct. It moves to the business meeting. The public hearing will be scheduled and that will be the second meeting in February.
Right. And does, what's over there?
It moves along directly with the budget and the water and sewer rates through the four-meeting process.
So along with the budget, there's a public hearing going to be required for that as well. So this is like the first step in approximately three steps before we finally vote on the resolution itself. So are we in consensus to move that to the business meeting to schedule the, the public hearing for the tax cap override? Fiscal year 2526 budget ordinance.
Yep. I'll just talk briefly about the budget. We're going to get into revenues later this evening after this meeting. I want to thank all the staff, department heads here who worked tirelessly on the budget. I believe we've recreated, created a responsible budget to meet the service needs of residents and businesses in Batavia. The city continues to deliver balanced budgets, reduce our debt service, prepare for bonding in the police facility. And we do compare favorably to other cities in similar size across New York. City council management and the audit committee continue to work hard to build reserves and keep a healthy unassigned general fund balance. Today, we have achieved 21% fund balance of this year's general fund expenses in line with our policy that requires us to have 20% to 25%. Both the water and wastewater funds continue to operate in a cost-efficient manner and both funds remain in a healthy position. However, as you've heard time and time again, there's significant projects coming up that we need to be dutifully saving for. The pond sludge removal, technology upgrades to the wastewater treatment plant, the future of the water plant, protecting its longevity because we don't know how long we will continue to draw water from there. The lead line replacements, the current projects that Tom has underway with the GPS mapping of all lateral lines and new meter installations are just a few that the water and wastewater funds need to undertake. As I see it, even with forward momentum and the promise of a better economy at the national level, this budget was set mainly before we understood what that might look like. Nor do we have enough information to use any of that in projecting revenue. So we had to use the information we had. As I said before, we have a million dollar increase in health insurance and retirement costs in our expenses before we even started the budget. That coupled with the uncertainty of how everything will stabilize made it very difficult. There, but the general fund budget is 22.8 million, as I said, up 600,000 or 2.6% from last year. The property tax rate is estimated to be $8.46 per thousand, a 50 cent decrease. You'll see on page 15 of your budget book and in the handouts you receive tonight, which are available for everyone here in the media on the back table, that we have numerous capital projects continuing to go on. I won't go through all of them, but we will do so during our budget meetings. The property tax levy we're looking to raise is $7.2 million with the tax, sales tax projected at $7.8 million. Our AIM aid remained flat at $1.7 million again this year. The governor does have an AIM increase inside of her budget, but we have no idea if that will end up being in the final budget. So therefore, it, it wouldn't be a good idea to budget that $203,000 as revenue at this point because we don't know if it'll be included in the final package on March 31st, when the budget passes from the state. CHIPS funding, $900,000. It's accounted on your revenue and expense side. Scott has got a lot of projects he wants to do this year with our streets. We've got appropriated on inside a fund balance higher than we've had it for many years. We're looking to use $526,000 of that quote-unquote rainy day fund or unassigned fund balance to balance our budget this year. We also felt the need to use 310,000 of retirement reserves, which we haven't had to do for the past few years. But with rising costs, we needed to use those reserves. We have a water transfer of $300,000. And the last two semi-large portions of income for this year is departmental income at $250,000 and license and permits of $215,000. So it's just a general reminder, your general fund is your DPW, your police, your fire, and your administrative services. We do budget conservatively for returns on interest. We see that interest rates will most likely go down and hopefully, sales tax would then go up as interest rates go down, you'll spend more. So we hope that, well, those two items will wash themselves out and our predictions and revenue will be correct. Your public safety of police and fire equals 47% of your entire general fund budget. And if you were to include the healthcare inside of that, because we don't in the budget, healthcare is paid for out of general government services, they would be well above 55%. So the services we provide, the basic services to our citizens, continue to be police, fire, and public works. I will move on to highlights of the other funds unless you have any questions I can address now.
Just, just to reiterate, you're proposing a 50% or 50 cent decrease per thousand tax.
Tax rate, correct.
Tax rate reduction, in other words, 50 cents less from last year. And you're, and you're basically saying that you're using a bunch of, variety of funding sources to balance the budget so that we're not taking too much out of savings and we're balancing it between the decrease and the reserves. So we're trying to get a little bit from everything to kind of balance it all out. Hopefully, we'll see more information in the next year and we'll have a better prediction of how inflation is going to either level out or increase. We don't know yet. So right now, we're being cautious about the budget.
Correct. Yes. If we could have raised sales tax, we wouldn't have needed to done the override particularly. If we could have had a flat year in healthcare and retirement, same thing, but those, those costs are essentially out of our control.
And, and the additional AIM aid is not, you can't count on that as well as VLT.
Correct. Nor do we count on VLT.
So we use that for one-time purchases of equipment and things like that. So we don't have to put that in the regular budget. We can actually pay cash for those and that kind of saves the tax rate a little bit as well. Okay. I just wanted to recap and make sure I had it all because you've covered a lot there.
Yeah, I have a question. Rachel, so the way I read this, we have to raise the tax cap even though we're not raising the taxes because the tax levy is increased because of all the...
Over the amount that the, the formula allows us to, correct.
Because of the increased properties.
Because of the increased assessment, correct.
And there's more, there's higher property values coming on?
Absolutely correct, yes.
So we're not raising anyone's tax rate? We're decreasing that?
Correct.
Okay.
But we have to override the tax rate to raise enough revenue in that line item.
And this is the process. I'm sure our phones will be ready for you.
No, no, but that's what we said last year. If you remember at this time, the assessments came out, but they didn't count for last budget because they came out, I think, in the summer and then we were already into that budget. So this is the budget that it's going to count for. And we said, when that happens, your house value goes up, but your taxes could possibly go down because the rate will go down based on the formula that is used to come up at that rate. So that's exactly what happened here. It's decreasing by 50 cents per thousand because of the higher assessed value and the balancing of our budget using a variety of sources. We're able to keep that as a pretty big savings. 50 cents adds, it's, it's 100 bucks on a $200,000 house, so average. I mean, we're roughing it out. So it's, it's, it helps. It's not like a huge savings, but it is a big savings. And, and I think that's where we should continue to work on is try to keep that tax rate as low as possible and even lower. We can do that next year with good sales tax and possible the governor increasing the AIM aid on a permanent basis instead of, you know, throwing a little bit out here and there. It's better to have it, something we can count on. And I did run into some of the state representatives at the YMCA ribbon cutting. And I, and I mentioned that to him, that I think that's really important. And we're seeing increases, but that AIM hasn't been increased in a number of years. The highway maintenance hasn't been increased in a number of years. Yet we're paying the higher labor rate. We're paying the additional cost to maintain these things. And we're not getting any funding back from the state. So they're looking at it. They're giving us something now, a year. Last year, they gave us a little something. This year, they're considering it. But I would like to see that a more permanent thing so we can include that in the budget going forward. That would be a huge savings to everybody who lives here. So if you have any ideas of anything, maybe write your governor and tell her to maybe increase the aid to municipalities on a more permanent basis instead of on an occasional basis. That would give us something more to plan then. So that's what they're working on. I, we made that request, but I don't know where it's going to go. So, any other questions on that? Okay. Are we in consensus to move the public hearing to the budget ordinance to the next business meeting? Do you think it's moved? The water rate?
Yep. So the water fund budget is 6.9 million. The rate is $6.52 per thousand gallons used. This is a 1% increase or 6 cents per thousand gallons used increase. And only the rate, not the capital improvement fee nor the meter fee, will be increasing. As everyone here has seen or had presentations in the past, we do have capital planning. We try to make very small, tiny incremental increases in the water fund over time so we can pay for some of those capital improvements we just discussed.
So that's going to be the only increase in water?
On the city's side, correct, yep.
I've had some people complaining about that. They're using less water and the bills are still going up.
Wait, they can always call and we'll take a look at them and find out if there's any leaks or things like that. With the new radio meter reads, will we be able to identify leaks quicker, Tom?
Yes.
A lot of times, there, there are small leaks. And when those are fixed, their bills go right back to, to average. And the average homeowner pays between $850 to $900 a year for water and sewer.
Well, I do know a leaking toilet that may not even be noticeable can really drive a bill. As I've had people tell me, and I said, check your toilet. Make sure it isn't leaking.
But they're welcome to call and they're welcome to work with our water staff to review what their bill is and why it might be higher, for their usage.
Okay, thank you. So Rachel, how much, is that, is that like six cents or something? I got that written down on my notes.
Yep. The water rate increases by six cents.
Per?
Thousand gallons.
Six cents per thousand gallons.
Which is a 1% increase.
Now, is that a built-in amortization for the infrastructure improvement? Because I remember, we have this conversation every year. And, and a lot of this is built in so that the aging infrastructure is already figured out. So they knew back when they built that plant that so many years from now, the sludge would have to be removed every so many years. The, the certain things would have to be replaced. You're talking about replacements of equipment in some places.
So we take, let's, for example, the Cohocton Water Project. Cohocton and Walnut needed to be bonded out. We take the highest cost that project could be. We have it into a capital planning sheet. And after we get payments from rate and meters and everything, each year over time, we see whatever that bonding schedule would be, how much we need to increase the rate to make sure we can pay for it. So it's all systematically done through the capital planning process behind the scenes.
And, and the way it was explained to me, because people get confused, there's almost like two departments here. There's the general fund and then there's the water fund and the water and sewer fund. And then, and water and sewer pays for water and sewer.
Correct.
It's not coming out of the general fund. So it's almost two separate amounts. That's why the water can increase by six cents on occasion, but the tax rate drops by 50 cents. They're not, they're somewhat related, but in a sense, they're separate.
Correct.
So water pays for water and all your water bill goes right for water, infrastructure improvements, water maintaining of the, of the existing facilities. So it's all kept in that one department, so to speak. And it's, sometimes it increases on a slower level because we have to plan for those infrastructure wearing out, things like that, correct?
Yes. And it's water fund. So each one's called a fund, sewer fund. And each one of those has staff and employees attributed to it as well. And even some of our salaries are attributed because we have to work in the water fund to do the budgeting, to do the analysis, to work with the state.
And that's, I think Lisa explained to me at one time, that's best practice. That's just how it's designed to be done. It's not like we're trying to, you know, fill something in there. That's the proper way to do it.
Absolutely.
Correct. Okay. Any other questions on that? Anything more you want to add, Rachel?
I can go into the sewer now, which is the next resolution.
Okay. Well, and then let me just make sure that we're all in consensus to move down. Okay, then. How about sewer rate?
The sewer budget is 4.86 million. The rate is $3.23 per thousand gallons used. I'm recommending for the first time in at least over 15 years to raise the rate 3% for operational maintenance costs inside the plant. And for a very large sludge removal project, we need to continue to build our reserves. There is no meter or capital improvement fees on that. And the total would be a nine cent increase. And again, the same $850,000 to $900 bill, not $850,000, $850 to $900 bill for a resident, residents with four people in it is roughly what your average city customer will pay annually.
And that includes water and the sewer?
Water, sewer, meter, capital, all together, all in.
And that's for the year?
And that's for the entire year. And it should only be going up between $25 and $50 this year, if that.
What's, what's the total?
For a residence of four, it should be around $850 to $900.
And what's the increase?
The increase between $25 and $50. Don't know for sure because it's based on your consumption, usage, and your leaky toilet.
Yeah, some will see more than others depending on their water use.
Right.
Any questions on that? As I recall, I think the sludge removal has been gradually getting more and more costly. Transportation costs have increased, as gas prices have increased. They've been passing that cost on to us to haul the sludge away. So it hasn't, it's been, I'd like to see it flatten out at some point. If we can get some things settled in the economy, I think we'd see a more flat fee on that. But lately, it's been just every year, every time it's needed. Seems like it's really increasing a lot. So that's where some of the costs.
We're looking forward to looking at other new technologies as well. The old technology is to scoop your sludge out, let it dry, and then put it into a landfill with hauling and trucking. There may be other technologies we can deploy and use. So we've taken kind of a hiatus this past year to start looking into those technologies to bid out maybe a more comprehensive project. Because we had bid out pond two to be cleaned. Bits came back. They weren't perfect, so we had to reject them. Now we're looking at it more holistically to do more ponds and with other technologies that are deployed with other wastewater treatment operators across the United States that use these types of ponds.
Anything you can do to keep the cost down?
Yep.
We're always looking at new ideas. If someone has an idea or a way that we can, you know, save the money on that sludge removal, that would be huge because that's a costly expense. Any, anything else, Rachel?
Not on that topic.
Okay. Any questions or concerns on that? So are we in consensus to move the sewer rate resolution to a public hearing at the next business meeting? Okay. Strategic plan?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Each year, the city does roll out a strategic plan and a strategic plan resolution. The council undertook a full review of the strategic plan. The council undertook a full review of the strategic plan in January of 2022 to solidify projects and activities to focus on. So you have the strategic plan in front of you, and for anyone that doesn't have the packet, there are copies on the back table. Thank you, Krista. But basically, we're highlighting kind of the biggest projects and outcomes this year, including the zoning code update, which Mr. Roach mentioned, continuing with brownfield opportunity redevelopment, the lead lines, city center, trying to work on floodplain, hazard mitigation plans, a comprehensive housing strategy focusing on neighborhood revitalization. Departments are looking at police accreditation, IT planning, development and upgrades. Eric's super excited to be working on that. Talent management in developing a fleet replacement plan. DPW will be doing wastewater treatment improvements as discussed, maintaining, replacing water lines. We finished the fire and BOM facility upgrades. That project's almost ready to be closed. We need to go through a round two and reassess what other building improvements need to be done to keep those facilities up to date. We have repairs of streets, paving, and parking lots, sidewalks, and construction of the new police facility, which should wrap up in 2025. And lastly, we have parks and recreation. We'd like to update a tree management plan and create a tree board. That'll be in conjunction with the $750,000 grant from DEC for tree removal and planting. We still have implement wayfinding signage that we'd like to get done here in the city, whether it's at the pedestrian level or at the driver street level for those major landmarks in the downtown area and major facilities like the ice rink and Dwyer and those places so people have some signage to know when they come into our city where they're going. We've had on our list for, since 2017, to create a parks master plan, so that still is there. Someday, we will definitely achieve that. We did the Jackson Square update. We still have Austin Park Playground, improvements to be done, and replacing the ice rink chiller. So these, this is, the strategic plan is presented, and I'd welcome any conversation or feedback on it.
Questions or concerns?
I would point out, council members, that this used to be about an eight-page document, and our grand administrator, Julie Daly, sat down with it one day and said, "How can we make this a little more user-friendly?" So kudos to her for putting it in this great format for us.
It's, it's an ambitious goal, but that's what we've been doing the last couple of years, and we've been achieving a lot, and it's all because you guys are really putting in the extra hours, so I appreciate all the work you guys have been doing, what you've got to do. Couple of years ahead of us still. Any questions on the strategic plan then? So are we in consensus to move that to the next business meeting? If it's moved, continue on, the annual capital project resolution?
Yes, annual capital project resolutions outlines the capital projects that the city plans to finish and begin undertaking in the upcoming years. Since 2017, we've realized over $152 million in completed public and private projects. $30 million of investment in our city right now is under construction and another 70 million is planned by 2028. In total, that's $254 million of investment and growth taking place in our city, also helping to, to fund the increase in assessed values as these buildings have reinvestment inside of them, their values will go up, and that will displace the tax burden over higher value properties. So this year, the additions to the capital resolution are the city's city center parking lot west, a sidewalk project for this year, 2526, tree trimming, removal and planting, the Tapp Swan Street sidewalk grant, and the city centered capital improvements. That is, if we do receive a grant from the governor's office, we're hoping to hear very soon on for upgrades at city center to do the tile, painting, some of the ceiling work, fix up the ceiling, paint the ceiling, and the bathrooms inside city center. But again, we're waiting on that grant from the governor's office as part of the CFA.
Any questions on that? You see progress going on, I took a look at the cement that you were talking about, it looks pretty good. You did a good job on that, so it's going to be a lot more spacey. You told me there was, it's going to have, like if there was an event and tables, that'd be another 10 or 15 tables we could squeeze in there, right?
Yes. It's all good and fabulous job doing that so much, Joe.
Yeah, it's good that we do things ourselves. I mean, not only do we learn how to do it, but then we have control over it and the end product, I think, looks a lot better. So are we in consensus to move the capital project resolution to the business meeting? Do you think it's moved? Website design and implementation?
I will pass the strategy to Rachel.
Thank you, Rachel. Council President, members of council, as you're well aware, we are mandated as a city to maintain outward-facing website to post minutes, agendas, department updates, contacts, and whatnot. When I was at the Chamber of Commerce, one of the, with the tourism department, one of the things we always used to say before somebody comes to move to your, to your city, they visit, and the first thing they do when they go to visit is they Google your, and they look at your website. And our website hasn't been updated in quite some time. It's very antiquated, it's difficult for our staff to maintain and to add things to, as well as it's very clunky, especially if, I don't know if you've had the opportunity to look at it from your phone, but our, our format that they use for cell phones and that is not great either. Let's face it, most people aren't sitting at home on their laptops anymore, they're Googling from their phone. So we currently use Civic Plus to manage and host our website. We pay them an annual fee to help us do that. They have offered to rebuild and redesign our website for us. It'll be about a six-month filled out. If we, if we get it started early March, they're looking by October to have it done. It'll be done simultaneously, side by side with our existing one, so we'll never lose contact. They'll literally build it, turn it on, turn off our old one, and off we go. In addition, in the governor's newest budget, it is now required that municipalities will have to have a .gov instead of a .com or a .work. So we will be changing our domain name. I have gone and applied for that. I got approval. It's not one that we love, but it's cityofpotavia NY.gov. And Civic Plus, as part of this, has agreed to do all the migration for that as far as the website goes as well, so.
And email.
And emails and servers and the whole.
So our email will end in cityofpotavia NY.gov?
Correct.
We have to get our business cards and all that.
We'll take care of all that stuff down the line. It's not a tomorrow thing, but.
No, no, no.
So there's two pieces to that, and we'll get more if you tell them that a couple months from now, but AIS will handle all the email stuff, but Civic Plus is going to include in this to go ahead and make sure that our website is up and our domain server is, I've already registered, but paid for and all that.
Now, are we gonna, are they gonna program it so if someone does put the old address in?
Yeah, it'll, it'll.
It'll still find us, but then when we respond back, it'll have.
It'll be a cross-functionality for a while.
Yeah, because there's going to be a lot of people that still have our.
Yep.
In their, in their phones and stuff.
The county's already switched over.
County's switched over.
To .gov five months ago, you know, they had for a whole month, you'd get an email that, "Don't forget, change my email."
The .gov piece is one of the, but the exciting piece for us is the redesign of the website.
Right.
Because it's really going to help us to showcase our city.
Right.
It's very user-friendly, you're not clicking six things to get to, you know, your email addresses. It's going to be very, very functional and it's going to look really nice on your cellphones when you go to look at that as well, so.
And our, our current website is extremely difficult for the general public.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
I do recommend, if any before this happens, the search bar on our website. If you search a word, you will find a lot, but you might find what you're looking for also. So it just depends on what you're searching for, but yeah.
And everything that's currently on our website, so all the past minutes, everything like that, will be migrated over to the new one, so.
People will still be able to watch.
Pardon me?
They'll still be able to access the minutes like they do now, or it'll probably be easier to access them than they are now.
Yep. So all in all, it's a $23,000 agreement. And to do that, I recommend that we take that from administrative reserves as well as sewer and water contingency because it obviously, now that we can pay online sewer and water bills and that, it's, it's, probably what's coming out of there as well, so.
Any questions or concerns on that?
Eric, are you going to monitor this as they're developing it?
Oh, we'll have.
On your cellphone?
We'll have it, no. We'll have a group in-house that will be helping with that as we go through.
Because you're right, I mean, it should be cellphone-friendly.
So when I, we did this at the Chamber of Service Department, and when we did it, they would literally show us, this is how it's going to look on your computer, and then the very next thing they'll be like, this is how it's going to look on your cellphone. So as we go through and design it, it'll work the same kind of way.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
There's a word for it, Bob, that I don't know, I can't remember what it's called, but yeah, it'll happen.
Mobilization.
No, it's not.
Sorry.
I know there's words, but you can't find them.
Oh, yeah.
So we are in consensus to move web, website design and implementation to the next business meeting. YMCA health and wellness for city employees?
Yes, thank you, Council President. So as the city continues to incentivize health and wellness of our employees through various programs such as our premium reduction for their health screenings, physical fitness incentives for firefighters and police officers, and $100 gym reimbursement, I believe the city should partner with the new Genesee County YMCA and offer a discounted membership for all city employees, including council members. I've had many employees come to me, council members come to me saying, "Wouldn't it be great if we could provide some kind of membership or incentive towards using the new facility?" So I went and looked at this year's budget. We have interest in earnings right now at about $24,000 that might top out around $50,000, so we could cover the majority of employees and council members if they were to sign up for this incentive. So I leave it to you to discuss and determine if this is something you'd like to move forward with.
Yeah, I have some concerns because this is almost like discriminatory. You get 500 if you join the Y, but if you join Al's Gym down the road, you get 100. Where we have three gyms in the city right now that are all paying property tax and local tax, they're only going to get 100.
We could go get rid of the 100 and just, I mean, force them to join the Y. It's just an offering. You're actually the council member that asked me about joining.
Right.
So.
So now is that a good idea?
Well.
No, I think it's a great idea.
I think you could get rid of the $100 if you'd like and just do the 500 to the Y. I don't know that we'd want to incentivize $500 to any gym across America. You know what I mean? Because it'd be way too hard for us to track.
I, myself, I just keep it equal, whatever it is for any, you know, if you're a gym membership, improving your health, you're doing something, because you don't even know. Somebody could say, "All right, I'll take 500, join the Y and go once for the year."
No, because the Y bills us. Why would you pay if you only want once for your health?
I don't know. You could do a strange stuff.
Well, that's the thing, if someone gets it just for the sake of getting it, but that's not going to cover the whole membership, so you're going to still be out of pocket. So I, and I don't think everybody will join it, so it's not going to be like 100 and some employees divided by $500. I mean, but that's something to consider, it's something to look at. I mean, I like the idea, I like where we're going with it, because in the long run, when you stay healthy, it saves us money on the other end on healthcare premiums and so on.
I'd rather share the wall, say maybe 200 for any gym membership.
We can put it on the, we can discuss it now or we can put it on the agenda and discuss it later? What do you want to do?
I think you should discuss that in conference because, or table it, I guess, to discuss it in other conferences.
No, it's, I mean, we should be discussing it right now. So, I mean, I think as it's written, I think it looks pretty good, but council, what else?
It's a perk for the employees, I think it's a perk for the employees.
It's $800 a year to be a member. How to pack for employee number three?
I'm sorry, say it again?
It's $800 a year for a family membership, I believe.
A thousand.
Oh, it's a $4,000.
Yes.
And one option, they ask.
Yep.
It's $80 a month. So, a little bit more, like $85 or something like that.
Okay, thank you.
So that just gives you 500 towards that year membership. It's not going to cover the whole membership. Okay, anyone else?
I think a single is just under $600, isn't it?
It is.
And it depends if you're a senior or not, there's different rates, so. So they're still going to be out of, out of pocket costs? I don't think 500 would cover the whole membership plan. It's already in there for $100, right? You're saying increase it to five and go towards the Y, is that?
No, you, employee would have the option for the $100 reimbursement, which they already have today, or if they'd like to join the Y, we'd give a benefit of $500. Again, specifically, I was asked from employees, from unions, what can you do to help us with covering costs of the new YMCA, so. Nobody asked me to join any other gyms.
So I think it's a good idea. I mean, do we want, we want to move this to a vote? Do we have to take a vote to move it? Or should we move it and then we could vote accordingly and that should show your disapproval or your approval there?
Let's do a vote now.
To move?
Vote, yes.
If we do vote, it's only to move it to the business meeting for an official vote?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So Heidi, did you want to call a roll or did you want to, we can just go through the, just go down the line?
If you're going to take a vote, call a roll.
We gotta call a roll, but it remains.
Yeah, get a motion to move it to.
Al has made the motions.
Get a second.
Senator Richmond, just second.
Councilmember McInnes.
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
No.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes. Okay, so that gets moved to the business meeting for a final vote. And then if anybody has any concerns, we can re-discuss it then. There'll be more information coming out of the fight every day.